Okay, have we begun recording because I haven't seen that pop up yet?
Yes, we are recording.
Okay, very good. Good. Okay, very good. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending this year's annual Clean Air, New Jersey Clean Air Council Public Hearing. My name is John Valeri and I serve as Chair of the Clean Air Council. While I know we were all hoping to get together with an actual public hearing, we're unfortunately not there yet. The Council had its first virtual public hearing ever last year, which was a tremendous success. And we continue to meet virtually until Governor Murphy indicates it's safe to go back to actual meetings. Our hope is that our 2022 meeting will be live, but at this point, we will be conducting our meeting virtually today. As I stated last year, I'm grateful to my fellow council colleagues as well as NJDEP staff for allowing us to continue functioning seamlessly as a council while being virtual. Today's hearing is a result of a monumental effort by NJDEP staff, including Frank Steitz, Director of Division of Air Quality, Ken Ratsman, the Assistant Director of Air Quality and Regional Planning, and of course, our own Heidi Jones, who staffs this council and who, year in and year out, organizes our meetings and our public hearings. Council is one of the best in New Jersey, and Heidi's efforts are one of the main reasons for our success. So, thank you, Heidi. I'd like to recognize my fellow council members who have worked seamlessly during this pandemic to make this hearing happen for a second year in a row virtually. I particularly would like to recognize Mayor Bob Campbell, who is chairing our hearing today. Mayor Campbell is the mayor of Downtownship and is the representative of the League of Municipalities on our council. You'll be hearing much more from him in a moment. Dr. Len Bialerai, a public member, is an allergist and is serving as vice chair of the hearing. I'd also like to recognize Alan Weston, my vice chair from the New Jersey Association of Counties, and also all the other council members who have participated throughout these close to a year and a half of virtual hearings to make the council and these public hearings a success. Finally, I'd like to recognize all of our speakers who are here with us today and graciously agreed to participate in our public hearing under very unusual circumstances. While we think our topic is obviously of utmost importance, we recognize that during a pandemic, you're all volunteering your time to participate while managing your own work and personalized during this time of social distancing. For all your efforts to be here today, the council thanks you, and I personally thank you. On a special note, I want to thank Commissioner Lotaret, who will be attending and providing opening remarks shortly. And we greatly appreciate the Commissioner's support of the council's work. Before I turn this over to Mayor Campbell, I just wanted to give you a brief, speak briefly about the council. The New Jersey Clean Air Council was established under the New Jersey Air Pollution Control Act of 1954. And I mentioned 1954 because it predates the Federal Clean Air Act by over a decade, actually almost two decades. The council serves in an advisory capacity to make recommendations to the Commissioner of DEP regarding matters of air quality. It consists of 18 members, 14 of which are appointed by the governor. Members include representatives of the Commissioner of Health, Community Affairs, the New Jersey Commerce Commission, and the Secretary of Agriculture, all who serve ex officio, as well as several business engineering, medical and health organizations, and public members. While the council generally meets once a month, the council is required, under the act, to conduct at least one public hearing a year regarding a particular air pollution control law and/or topic. Today's hearing fulfills that obligation. We are especially proud of the fact that recommendations from our hearings have formed the basis for policy and, in some cases, legislation. And you should all feel that your participation today could lead to similar policy initiatives. And with that, I'd like to turn the hearing over to Mayor Robert Campbell, our hearing chair and our municipal representative on the council, who will begin the hearing. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here. This is my first chair experience, so bear with me. I would like to introduce Leonard Leary, the hearing co-chair for hearing topic and procedures. Len?
You're on mute, Len.
I have the share screen, the first slides. As the co-chair, I'm the one who's been given the task of providing guidance in the timing and limiting our keeping ourselves on schedule. So, I have to apologize, Zoom meetings are not easy to be maintained, people feel. But we ask people to be focused, to address the point, and provide the best information that we can get to provide the public report, the report that's generated from this meeting, and to provide input. So therefore, again, individuals are asked to maintain their timeliness, stick to the topic, and provide an overview of their interests. And remember that you still have everybody, including speakers and public, can provide the input via written as a review. If you have questions, you are asked to please type them in. These are not an open forum and for me to review, and I will pose the questions in summary. It is primarily the case of the council to provide questions at that time. But again, they may be limited by time due to circumstances. But we will have breaks, and we will try to maintain the decorum as needed through the Zoom, which is not an easy feat. But again, I ask everybody, please, to understand and participate and look forward to a successful meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Len. It's 9:07. Is the Commissioner on the line? Hello?
Mayor, I do not see him. I'm checking the list right now. I do not see him on the list just yet. He was going to join us at 9:15, but I will do a quick inquiry to see if he is available now.
Okay, we're moving fairly quickly here. I just want, I'd just like to mention that I was preparing for this chairman event today, and my wife said, "What the heck is fugitive dust?" And it was hard to explain. I said, "Just look at all the furniture in the house, and it's easy to understand." So, that was my comedy for the morning. She didn't appreciate that, by the way.
Expecting you to clean it.
Yeah. I guess that's what the dust spray was for on the counter. It's actually a very interesting topic. I didn't know much about it myself until we started to discuss it. And it's something that we don't think about a lot, except on maybe a dry summer day, when you have to keep blowing your nose. That's probably got a little bit to do with fugitive dust also. So, the idea that it comes from so many places, roadways, parking lots, farmland. And we're going to get, I think we're going to get a lot of interesting information today from the presenters. And I'm getting ready to go. Standing by for the Commissioner.
So, we'll wait for the Commissioner. And excuse people, leave six minutes to...
John, is there a share screen for the slides? Because they didn't come up.
Oh, Heidi Jones, do you have, or Frank, do you have the slides that we can put up?
I just sent Heidi a quick chat. Heidi, do you have the etiquette slides that we could put up?
Yeah. There we go. Oh, it's coming on?
I will check. I don't think I actually do.
Oh, okay.
I think that was shared between you guys, but I can try to download them real quick.
Hey, John, can you hear me?
Yes.
I didn't know, since we're five minutes out from the Commissioner, do we want to maybe, I know historically, we, you know, just to fill in filibuster here, go around just literally 30 seconds, introduce ourselves?
Right. Or the record?
Sure, we can do that.
You want Heidi to just go down the roster and name off people?
Heidi's got the time to do it. I don't know if she's tied up.
Okay. My suggestion is, why don't, John, why don't you as the chair just run through the list, and we'll have the council go?
So, let me start. My name is John Valeri. I'm an attorney at Kieza Shinian and Jantamasi. I am the chair of the council.
Commissioner's here now?
Commissioner's here now? Well, then, we're not going to run through the... We're going to start.
So, we don't have to filibuster. Good. Who doesn't love a good filibuster? Especially when it comes from John Valeri. Come on.
Commissioner, that I always appreciate coming on for no other reason than we love to hear you speak, and you have the best background in state government.
That is only thanks to our digital guru, Jimmy Douglas. And none of you in the private sector can have it.
All right, we're going to turn, I'm going to turn this back over to our hearing chair, Bob Campbell, to introduce him. We'll start, we'll start now.
Okay. Commissioner, it's great to have you here today. And I'd like to present everybody, Commissioner Lotaret from the NJDEP, with his welcome and opening remarks for the event today. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to everyone. It's always nice to be with you. So, let me begin by thanking everybody for joining us today. I'm encouraged to see folks from our municipal governments and state agencies, and those from our universities and planning organizations, and of course, from the business community. I'd like to extend my thanks and gratitude to our chairman, John Valeri, and our vice chairman, Alan Weston, and our hearing chair, Mayor Campbell, and vice hearing chair, Dr. Len Bialerai. So, I appreciate everyone coming together to facilitate this hearing today. And before we get to our discussion, I just want to take a moment and say that I consider the governor's nomination last week to be such an incredible honor and a really humbling responsibility. To be Commissioner of Environmental Protection is an honor beyond any I could have imagined. And I'm really grateful to the governor for his confidence in my leadership and the opportunity that we have to work side by side with the outstanding people of DEP, nearly 3,000 environmental professionals that have made the protection of our environment and public health the cause of their lives. So, to all of my DEP family that's on here today, thank you for your service. Your work impresses me and, quite honestly, moves me every day. So, over the years, the Clean Air Council has advised my predecessors on a wide range of important and emerging air quality issues, from power plant emissions to interstate transport, air toxins, mobile sources, cumulative impacts, and of course, climate change. And today, I look forward to hearing your advice and thoughts on the issue of fugitive dust emissions and the impact on the health of our residents, including those in disproportionately impacted environmental justice communities. Because clean air is a public health issue, it's an environmental quality issue, and it is a justice issue. We already know that the cumulative impacts of pollution from facilities and mobile sources tend to be concentrated in vulnerable neighborhoods that contribute to significant higher increases or incidence of asthma and other respiratory illnesses among residents in those communities. But of course, it's not just an environmental justice issue. It affects us all. And though it affects folks that are in our most vulnerable communities to a more significant degree. And we've learned in the past year that those same communities with higher numbers of residents who have underlying health conditions and in part, a function of the environmental stressors that we endure. Those folks have been inordinately impacted by this pandemic. And it's our responsibility to do a better job at protecting all of our residents with a keen focus on those most vulnerable among us. Because alleviating the environmental challenges in one community is a benefit to our entire New Jersey community. And we all know that the issue of fugitive dust emissions has been a particular concern in some EJ communities like Camden, where along the waterfront south neighborhood, industrial sources ranging from some recycling centers to material storage piles have been a source of fugitive dust. So, I ask you all to keep all of our communities in mind throughout this hearing, while paying special attention to those who've shouldered more than their fair share of the pollution that we all together create. So, let's talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing today. I know you have a lot of ground to cover during this session. But as you focus on fugitive emissions, I'd ask you to consider a couple of questions. First, what are the major contributing, what are the major activities that are contributing to fugitive dust emissions? And I apologize for the dog prancing around in my background. He's hiding underneath that island. And I'll ask you to consider those major activities contributing to fugitive dust. But also, what are the best dust mitigation strategies that can be implemented for each dust generating process that you've identified, whether it's industrial or agricultural or residential even? And how can fugitive dust emissions be monitored? How can we improve upon our regulatory structure and our enforcement? Should we be considering fugitive dust emissions in the context of permit evaluations? And should we be doing more to recognize the potential adverse health outcomes resulting from uncontrolled fugitive dust emissions? So, just in closing, again, I want to reiterate that we have a deep commitment, as you all know, to ensuring that New Jersey is pursuing a clean air strategy that protects all of our residents. And in doing that, in lifting up every community, we can deliver on that promise of environmental quality and on that promise of environmental justice. And of course, again, fugitive just dust issues not being unique to just EJ communities, a major, it could be a major nuisance to communities and fellow businesses throughout the state. And that's why we're here today, working to listen and to amplify the voices of folks throughout New Jersey in order to better protect them, in order to better protect our environment. So, thank you for your partnership in that pursuit, and I look forward to being with you all again.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Okay. The next order of business, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. The next order of business would be our first presenter is Kenneth Ratsman. He's the Assistant Director of Air Quality Regulation and Planning at the New Jersey DEP. In this position, he oversees all the permitting actions, planning functions, and modeling and risk analysis review. Prior to this post, Ken was the chief of Bureau of Air Permits. Ken is a graduate of Lehigh University with a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering. He also has an MBA from La Salle University in Accounting and Finance. Are you there, Ken?
I am here. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can. Looks great.
Okay, so, the Commissioner kind of set me up nicely to kind of go through some of the items that he was talking about. What I'm going to cover is a little bit of background on what is fugitive dust, the types of sources that might generate fugitive dust and those associated emissions. What are some of the impacts, health and environmental impacts of particles in the air? What can be done to mitigate those particles or alleviate them or slow it down or reduce it? And then, just a very quick discussion on current regulations. And you'll see when we get there, there's not a lot. So, that's some of the areas of challenge. So, what is fugitive dust? When this subject was introduced to the council, they said, "What are you talking about, Ken?" This really was an outgrowth of the Camden Community Collaborative and some issues down there. And you'll see in my upcoming slides, some pictures and some videos of what actual fugitive dust looks like. But it's suspended in the air, and it may or may not be emitted from a specific emission point. In general, it's not emitted from an emission point. The term fugitive is used to denote the dust that escapes into the atmosphere rather than being exhausted into a confined flow stream. If you have something going up a stack, you could potentially control it. If it's not going up a stack, it's almost impossible to control it with a control device. But there are mitigating activities. About half of the fugitive dust particles are larger than 10 microns. And that matters because the smaller particles are more challenging for your body to process. They have more of an impact on your well-being. And that's why there's a PM 2.5 standard, Particular Matter 2.5 mils and smaller. And I'll talk about what that means. Composition will be determined by material being processed. So, the particle is going to depend on what it is you're doing. Are you digging up soil? Are you mining rock? Are you processing something at a recycling area? Is it dredge spoils? Dredge spoils could have anything and everything in it historically. So, what is the fugitive dust you're trying to look at? Just kind of an overall emissions inventory. And this is kind of a snapshot of our inventory done at a state level. A lot of road dust, paved roads 62%, unpaved roads 16%. They are spread out across the state, highways, local roads. So, that is a special category that which we did not really focus on. We're looking at dust more as a local issue, a local impact. So, where do we see it locally? We see agricultural tilling, we see mining and stone gravel, construction, and farm animal dust. Now, one of the challenges with this inventory is this is just estimates. There, you don't know what you don't know is kind of the statement we make. So, when we go into some of the permitted source types, and I show you some of these pictures, I don't know that these emissions are accounted for in those inventories. So, some of the permitted source types where we have fugitive dust and in the air world, air permitting world, a fugitive emission from a specific source is, it still gets permitted, but it's accounted for a little bit differently. You can have a landfill with fugitive dust, a quarry, recycling centers, as I said earlier, certain types of them. Commercial mining, again, certain types of commercial mining are going to have fugitive dust. Some of the unpermitted source types, and meaning we don't have air permits. They might have permits from some other division in DEP or maybe some kind of approval from another state agency. But land development areas and construction sites obviously have fugitive dust. Roadways, as I already highlighted, near-road or off-road areas can have dust issues. One of the unpermitted source types which we're going to focus on is material piles, sand, wood chips, aggregate, or anything that can be in a pile. And of course, building demolition. You know, we've all seen pictures of buildings imploding and, you know, the big dust cloud that comes off after it. That is fugitive dust. So, I've got a couple of videos and a couple of pictures to share with you. They always say a picture is worth 1,000 words, well, a video is worth 1,000 pictures. So, I'm just going to hit play on this one. And you can clearly see emissions coming off from the middle of the picture off to the left side. Okay, I will move to the next slide. And again, just focus in the area where the lights are. I'm going to click this video. Sorry for the noise, but it is a little loud. But this is a pile getting moved from one area to another with a claw. And you could see dust, and it's clearly delineated by, through the cloud of the light. And at the moment, most of these piles don't have air permits associated with them. And this is another pile. You can see a little bit of dust coming off of one area and leaving the property line right here. This is a, whoop, just a picture. And you can see, obviously, a dust cloud coming off the site. You can see right up here where the conveyance system is dropping the aggregate down there. And there's dust coming off of the aggregate pile. Again, this is a landfill, obviously hazy at the local level. This is a dust area. Port unloading, again, you have a claw operation. It's taking material off a ship here, putting it into a hopper, and going to get loaded into a truck here. There's obviously fugitive dust coming off of the loading operation. And this is aggregate processing. I can't tell if this is a mining or if this is a aggregate storage and shipment area. But either way, there's aggregate, there's aggregate dust coming off of this site. John, can you just confirm you all heard and saw those videos?
Yeah, yes, we did. I believe we did.
They were...
Okay, the virtual world, it's got to get feedback once in a while. Okay. So, where are these facilities located? Well, those pictures were from all over the state. But as the Commissioner alluded to, the disproportionate amount of these facilities are in EJ areas. I will say Camden highlighted this as an issue. There are several recycling facilities, scrap yards, and some other activities that were, I didn't name any specific facilities with those pictures. But they're throughout the state, and many of them are in environmental justice areas. And what's different, what's different about dust? To me, dust is a local issue. New Jersey is meeting the PM 2.5 standard as a whole for the state, but there are clearly local issues with dust and dust management that needs to be addressed. All right, as I said earlier, emissions will depend on the materials that are being used in the process. So, it's going to be process-specific of what those actual emissions are. When we talk about fugitive dust in the air permitting world, we're looking at it based on the particle size. Anything smaller than PN 10, particulate matter less than 10 microns, PN 2.5 to less than 2.5 microns. And then specifically, are they hazardous air pollutants? So, the dust could be categorized into one, two, or all three of those categories. If it's less than 2.5 and a hazardous air pollutant, well, it's going to be fit into all three of those categories. And as I said earlier, emissions are primarily impacting local communities. And this is maybe a little bit different than what we talked about with greenhouse gases. Greenhouse gases are a worldwide issue. It doesn't matter if it's emitted in China or New Jersey. It's going to be an impact to the global system as a whole. When we talk about ozone and the NOCs and the VOCs, that's more of a regional issue. So, something that happens in Pennsylvania or in Ohio will have an impact on New Jersey and New York, Connecticut. Dust emissions are going to be local. They're not going to migrate thousands of miles or hundreds of miles. In most cases, it's going to be confined to a local area. All right, health and environmental effects. The potential effects of particulate pollution, again, are related to the size and makeup of the particular material being worked on. So, depending on the particle, it could have different impacts. The smaller the particle, the more impact it's going to have on human health. And why is that? It can be inhaled into your lungs and lodged there. It affects the children and the elderly and people with existing heart and respiratory issues the most. Not to be, and not to dismiss it, but it can also affect healthy individuals, especially those who spend a good amount of time either living or working in those areas. The health effects can be minor, all the way up to major. It could be just an irritation to the eyes, nose, and throat. Why am I getting that cough, little cough today? Could be respiratory stress. It could exacerbate your bronchitis or asthma or emphysema. And it can actually, and American Lung Association has a lot of information on this, it can lead to heart attacks and aggravated heart disease and premature death with those with serious lung or heart conditions. As a side note, fugitive dust can also reduce visibility, cause hazy conditions. We do have a regional haze program in New Jersey. And haze is another issue we do have to worry about. We all want to go outside and say, "Wow, look at this clear blue sky." Well, if you're in or near one of these facilities with a lot of dust, you may never have a clear blue sky. you may never have a clear blue sky. The most practical way to date is to address fugitive emissions through best management practices. And at a minimum, BMPs, best management practices should address the following elements. If you're talking about a surface, a pile, wetting the surface of the pile. If you have a dirt roadway on your property, wetting the surface of the road. We have watering, treating and sweeping and sealing of paving paving roads as an option. The maintaining of stockpiles is challenging. You want to include watering and the reducing the drop distance between the discharge point and the top of the stockpile. When I showed the picture of the crane unloading the boat, that was a 10, 15 foot drop maybe. And that has the potential for fugitive emissions. You can construct windbreaks, vegetative control or embankments to to reduce wind exposure. I don't know if you've ever picked up your own wood chips or your own aggregate at a at a yard. They have kind of blocked up areas where different piles are stored. Well, that helps mitigate dust emissions. Enclosing operations is also a viable option, but it may be expensive. But enclosures, crushers, screeners or other material transfer points is a very effective fugitive dust mitigation method. And again, you can always wet and dust your to suppress dust control. Controlling the loading and movement of vehicles throughout the site by reducing their speed or 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 traveling during unfavorable conditions. If it's a high wind day or something like that. Lastly, and this is where I wish I had more to report out. Under the New Jersey regulations, we have a case by case kind of look at this. There is no clear regulation on how to regulate a pile. In some cases, we do regulate the material transfer. In some cases, we don't. And it's it's one of the challenging areas. We can, when there is a regulatory hook or an enforcement issue, we can require dust management plans. And in those dust management plans, they can implement the best management practices. One of the one of our findings is rules may need may be needed to amend to cover the additional sources clearly. From a federal perspective, there's not a lot out there. Some other states, we did some lookups on. It is more of a best management plan approach without a lot of clear guidance on on what the options are. Oh, I think I finished on time or near on time. Any questions that the council wishes to ask of me?
Any comments or question for council members for Ken?
This is Dr. Bieleri. For all council members, when asking a question, please identify yourself for the Zoom. So we have it on record or so we have the details. Again, this is Dr. Bieleri. I do have questions. Do we have any data on the distance for this different types of dust? You showed excellent pictures of, you know, the wind coming off the top. So if it's a sand pile, salt pile, a variety of different dust content, particulate matter, and the distance traveled, because you did provide, and it's this is an interesting, in the mining, I always thought there was watering of the dust to decrease the transport. So I mean, that that is a major component. So that's question one. Do we have any data about dust and its transport? One, two, 65%, you say two thirds is coming from paved roads. And that's another question. What's the dust from that component? Do we have an analysis? And do the barriers that we see along the highways provide decrease? Does it does that work? Those are my two major questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bieleri. One of the things I did say is we don't know what we don't know. And that's unfortunate. That was a statewide inventory that's planned that's prepared for our state implementation plan purposes. And it's a high level ballpark estimate. I think a lot of the local sources are not quantified and and not accounted for in that inventory because we just don't know. How far or how 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 what is in it is going to be a case specific inquiry. We've had sand mines in South Jersey where a a property owner a half a mile away has complained about sand essentially being deposited on their car on a regular basis. Is it coming from the pine lands or is it coming from the sand quarry a half a mile away? That's a hard question to answer and it's almost impossible to quantify. As far as makeup, there's a quarry up in Northwest Jersey that is doing asbestos, that has asbestos as kind of one of its constituents. And obviously, there's a whole different set of concerns at that location. Again, the quantification and how far it goes is 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 still a question mark. So that's it's going to be a case specific, take a look at each facility. I wish I had a better answer than that.
No, thank you very much. I mean, it gave me the background, which is important for the council to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ken, it's John Valeri. Just just a quick question. When you mentioned at the end that there's not a lot of regulatory guidance or regulatory authority. If you could just clarify, because I know we'll be hearing next from the water side of life. Was that was your statement meant with regard to the entire DEP realm of regulatory authority? Were you focused just on the air regulations?
That good question, John. I was focused solely on the air regulations from an air perspective. Yeah, and and the connection to the stormwater management program is a is a good one. So you know, there's some opportunities for overlap. You know, for for something in the stormwater means it has to deposit onsite or offsite somewhere. So there's clearly a strong connection to what the work they do.
Okay, thank you.
But but for every time we put down a wet suppression system, you may have the water program saying, we don't want you to spray more water over here. So we don't want another discharge. So there's there's a balancing act there also.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Is there anyone else from the council that wants to make a comment or question?
Oh, yeah, this is Richard O'Peake in New Jersey Department of Health. Just curious, for those sites that are in fact implementing best management practices, do we have any data available as to the degree to which they reduce the particle transit into the local community? Because if you have, let's say, a quarry, you know, in one part of the state that is actually using the best management practices and doing the watering of, you know, to keep all the dust down, and you have another one on another part of the state that is not implementing the best management practices. Do we know the degree of reduction in the one that is doing the best management practices? Any sense of that?
Yeah, probably the best indicator for getting something like that is going to be a little surprising, but it may be the number of enforcement complaints. When neighbors complain that I'm getting dust or debris on my car, on my house, on my windows, that is a good indicator there's a dust problem. If they've done their dust mitigation process, the practices, I would wager that the dust complaints go down. That would probably be the best indicator we have, and we could certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the council? Okay, Ken, thank you very much. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
And very artistic videos. I like them.
I do want to thank my enforcement counterparts. They're they're in the field all the time. Some of those were taken at nighttime based on citizen complaints. So I I failed to mention my enforcement counterparts are responsible for 99% of that content for video and pictures.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, our our next presenter.
Next speaker, I think Dr. Bieleri. Did you want us to display the the etiquette slides again one more time?
We have 10 minutes before the next speaker formally. Okay. I like at the agenda, the etiquette slide, so I can actually have everybody visually see this and make sure that we're, you know, we have some guidance here. So if you can share screen with this etiquette slides, please, Heidi. As you see here, there's the Clean Air Council members and the representations. Well, and that's provides the introductions. Next slide. This is the etiquette slide that, you know, I verbalized. But I want to make sure we visualize as well because Zoom is both an audio visual component. So we the public should be aware that we're muting. They will be muted during the presentations. If there are technical questions, please, you know, use the chat function, which we all have. If you don't, it's the little on the bottom, you have a screen where you have conversation. That is the part what we call the chat. It's on the right side of the screen when it comes up. So please use that and we will try to help you in that regards. Oral comments, they are at the end of presentations. If you have signed up to provide an oral comment, please unmute yourself when you are called, meaning specifically, and activate your camera to display yourself with your name. Your name must be fully exposed to understand who is the speaker. There are three minutes for make comment. These will be at the end of our presentations. And they should only be relevant. So individuals who are from the public, you know, they have related to the fugitive dust issues. There is a one minute warning if you feel, and again, I always try to reinforce to individuals when speaking, highlight the point you want to make in the very first 30 seconds, first minute, the first paragraph. Give a little background and reinforce what you is the takeaway message for the council to take home and to integrate into the overall report that is generated. Then quote unquote, you will be muted at the end of your three minutes, and we will move on to the next speakers. Next slide, if there's any others. Written comments, very important. Just because you may have not signed up for the oral presentation of comments or issues, we will be recording. So the meeting chat, again, be just appropriate in your comments. But we're not asking for the the comments from the chat room. We wish for you, quote unquote, to write them because the chat room is something for me to see, but it's not part of the official public record. Written statements in a the word processing, Microsoft Word will be accepted until May 1st. So if you have any comments or thoughts based upon what's been presented, please email them to Heidi Jones, shown on the screen, heidi.jones@dep nj.gov. Or you can physically, if you don't have access to that, you can actually mail them to the address shown below. The New Jersey Clean Air Council specifically associated with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and the mail code, second floor, post office box 420, Trenton, New Jersey, 086250420. Next slide, and it should be actually, I don't think there's any others. Oh, speakers, okay. We will, you know, I usually will try if you meeting, we're actually ahead of schedule, but all present will be giving a verbal, I will jump in and mention there's a three minute and then a one minute warning. But if you're just to get into a closure, presenters should turn on their camera when speaking. So again, identification of all those speakers. If you're not using a PowerPoint, we will keep your keep your visual component. Council members are the ones who are permitted to ask questions. Only the council members at this point in time of the presenters at the end of their individual presentations and should turn on their cameras when speaking and identify themselves. The next slide. And I think that's it. That is it. So with that, I pass it back to the chair where we are six minutes or yes, six minutes early. So we can proceed and I will try. And if each speaker provides enough time, we will maximize the question and answer period and proceed with the timely workings of the speakers at this point in time. I turn it over back to you, the chair.
Thank you very much. I would like to introduce the next speaker, Daniel Cootie. Did I say that right, Dan?
It's Cuddy.
Cuddy, okay, sorry.
That's fine.
Dan Daniel Cuddy, environmental specialist three. His presentation is going to be on industrial stormwater permitting overview. Daniel is a graduate of Rider University. He began his career as a biological observer for the Marine National Marine Fishery Service and then transitioned to the NJDEP Bureau of Freshwater and Biological Monitor. In 2005, he transferred to the NJDEP Bureau of Nonpoint Pollution Control, Industrial Stormwater Permitting Unit, where he has spent the last 16 years. Daniel has participated in both state and federal stormwater advisory committees and is involved with creation and management of statewide general stormwater permits, rules and program initiatives. And Dan, let's have your presentation on stormwater permitting, industrial stormwater permitting overview. You got the floor.
Thank you. I just want to thank the council for inviting me here today to talk about stormwater permitting. So I'm going to give a brief overview of, you know, our permitting program and, you know, who we regulate, what kind of permits we issue and how we deal with dust control as it as it pertains to stormwater permitting. So the the program began 1987 as an amendment to the Clean Water Act. Stormwater regulations were required. New Jersey began its program in 1993. We regulate discharges from industrial sites to both surface water and groundwaters of the state. Through federal regulation and state regulation, we regulate stormwater discharges from 11 categories of industrial activity. These categories are based primarily on the SIC code of a facility, but also include some the just activity based groups. So just to quickly go through those, we have any facility that has an established stormwater effluent limitation, facilities which fall into what's considered the heavy industry, which is lumber production, petroleum production, things of that nature, mining operations, hazardous waste treatment, storage and disposal facilities, landfills, recycling and waste facilities, electric generating facilities, transportation facilities, treatment works, construction activity, and then light industry, things like warehousing and and those things. The types of permits that we issue can be broken down into five kind of groups here. There's individual, industry specific, general permits, basic, the basic industrial general permit, construction permits. And then we issue non applicability determinations for facilities that are regulated, but don't require a permit. So to start, we'll talk about individual stormwater permits. There's two categories of those. There's individual, industrial and individual construction permits that we issue. These are based around discharge monitoring and site specific BMPs. Those BMPs are put together in a comprehensive stormwater pollution prevention plan for the site, which includes a drainage control plan to identify areas of industrial activity on the site. These permits allow for flexibility and customization for each facility. They are inspected annually by our Water Compliance and Enforcement Bureau Office. And we have approximately 230 of those sites throughout the state. The the best management practices that we employ at these sites are designed and written for that individual site. We can pull, you know, the requirements from various sources, including other departments and bureaus within the state and the state soil standards. The primary concerns that they address are impacts to surface and groundwaters through offsite transport. And they can be applied. And they can be applied to, you know, any, any facility type. When looking specifically at dust control BMPs, we typically aren't too prescriptive with the BMPs. This is an example of one that would be in a permit. We, we do reference state soil standards when dealing with dust control. And in all of our BMPs, you know, for dust control, we, we need to identify that they're not causing any additional discharges, you know, through, you know, watering activities or things like that. The next group of permits that we have are industry specific general permits. These are statewide permits that are designed for a specific industry group. You know, they're out, they're laid out here with, you know, there's asphalt production, quarrying, scrap metal, concrete production. These are a single master permit that's written for the industry group that all those that qualify for it would apply to be covered under. They aren't customizable for each site. The, it's one permit that's written for everyone. These are typically inspected once every one to three years by our compliance officers. And the, they total about 520 or so throughout the state. The next group of permits is our basic industrial permit. This is a strictly BMP based permit. There's no monitoring associated with this. The, it's considered our most stringent permit because the BMPs are designed to eliminate all discharges associated with industrial activity. It is available to all regulated facilities. However, it's typically really only used by the light industry group. It's, it's too difficult for the, you know, heavy industries to, to meet the standards of that permit. They're inspected once every five years and we have about 1,900 of those. The final permit group is our construction general permit. This is a short term permit that's issued to any site that's disturbing one acre or more or less than one acre, but is part of a larger common plan that's greater than an acre. The, the permit is focused around the adherence to a certified soil erosion sediment control plan as well as the development of a site waste management plan that deals with stormwater impacts that are outside of soil. So things like concrete washouts, chemical storage onsite, site, construction waste storage. These are inspected by the Soil Conservation District staff on a regular basis. And we have anywhere between 25 and 3,000, 2,500 and 3,000 active permits throughout the state at any time. The last group, like I mentioned before, is our non-applicable, non-applicable facilities. These are facilities that are, fall within the regulated category, but they, they don't need a permit based on a number of reasons, mostly that they are able to achieve permanent no exposure, which means that above what the, the general, the basic general permit requires of no discharge, these have no exposure of any source material, meaning most likely that it's, you know, it's a confined building that everything is stored in. These, these NAFs are tracked in our system, although they aren't inspected except for an initial inspection. So with our general permits, the BMPs have to be more generic than what we can put into an individual permit. The, when, when looking at dust control, our, our industries of most concern are mining and quarrying, concrete manufacturing, wood chip recycling, scrap metal and a construction. The, the BMPs again are generalized for the, you know, for the facilities. They, an example here from our sand and gravel general permit. You know, states that, you know, for spraying, that the, that no process water can be used for this activity and that the, the activity can't generate a discharge at any time. The primary concern when, when writing and dealing with dust control is preventing these discharges from entering the waterway and being discharged offsite. Some of the challenges we have with, you know, dealing with dust at industrial facilities is that when we write, you know, our BMPs, especially for the, those, you know, industry groups that we have the general permits for, is that they have to be generalized, you know, across the industry group. We can't, you know, specifically address any one site, you know, they have to be, you know, for everyone in that group. The BMPs have to have a, a stormwater component. So just air blown dust, you know, fugitive dust coming off of a site isn't something that a stormwater permit can really handle. It's more, you know, dust being deposited on a site within an area, you know, per se that was, is identified as non, you know, industrial and being discharged, you know, those, those are our concerns with dust. We also have to consider, you know, the potential impacts of the BMPs that we, we select to control the dust, that they don't cause other issues related to stormwater discharges. You know, covering large piles may control the dust, but also might, the runoff from that, you know, could generate or cause some erosion and other issues when, when considering stormwater. And then just the general permitting process to, to get these BMPs into permits and to issue these general permits is a lengthy process. And so reacting to, to changes in the industry and stuff are, are slow to be addressed in these general permits. You know, moving forward, when considering dust control at these facilities, you know, the stormwater program is going to be looking to, to coordinate with the air program to see if there are existing BMPs or possibly, you know, coming up with new BMPs that could address both of our concerns at these, at these facilities when looking, you know, to control the dust. The, just the last slide here is the, the status of some of these industry specific general permits. A lot of them are currently expired. We're working on the renewals of them. So there is opportunity to, you know, add and come up with new strategies in these permits. And we look, you know, we look forward to working with the air program to, to develop some of these things. So that, that's all I have.
Excellent. Excellent. Our chair, please.
I'm sorry, the, any council members have some comments or questions for Dan.
Yeah, this is John Valeri. I have a question. Dan, I, it's a similar question to what I asked Ken, or similar in line. Knowing that your program is focused on stormwater and not essentially air emission, I am curious though, whether the activities similar to what Ken put up as examples, whether it was in video or picture, are the types of activities you would regulate anyway because they are potential sources of stormwater and therefore must implement BMPs? And maybe a second part of it is, are the BMPs that Ken talked about with respect to deposition or respect to, to his side of the analysis, the same or similar to what you folks would consider as part of your general or individual permitting?
Yes, I mean, to, to keep it simple, we, we do regulate, you know, the same sort of activities even more so, you know, aggregate piles are something that is a concern for stormwater runoff. And yeah, the BMPs that we would utilize can be similar to what air would consider. Again, there does have to be a, you know, stormwater component to our BMPs. So what may work as an air BMP might not necessarily work as a stormwater BMP, but there is, you know, obviously some, some crossover that can, that can work for both.
So for example, spraying, which is something Ken had mentioned to control dust. I take it that's something from, it's not stormwater, but it's still, I take it would be a concern from, if not your shop, your shop, a general sort of water permitting, water discharge point of view.
Right, yeah, I mean, it is, it is something that we, we do allow as a BMP as long as it is very controlled and doesn't generate any additional discharges from, from a site.
Okay.
But it's not, it wouldn't be our number one choice, obviously, for, for a, a site.
So maybe an inherent conflict.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is Dr. Leonard Bieleri again. That's, you asked, John asked part of my question is that, so if, if a site is using a water based fugitive dust inhibitor, what, what is the criteria for it to be quote unquote stormwater or come under your purview? You, you mentioned it in a very lightweight, that well, if they have, if it is, if it doesn't do something, what is that something that crosses the line?
So if there is a, I mean, it's, it is not stormwater technically. I mean, if they're, if they're pulling water from a stormwater retention basin, then yes, it is stormwater that they're using for the dust control. But if that, that process is causing a visible discharge to an outlet or to a stream or to another water body, then it, it would no longer be considered a stormwater discharge. It would be a surface water discharge, which our permit won't cover and that most likely wouldn't be covered by our surface water program as an allowable discharge.
All right, that, that answers my question. Thank you very much. Turn it back over to the chair. We are ahead of schedule.
Is there, are there any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, Dan, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation. And we're running about, like you said, about seven minutes ahead of schedule here. Chairman, we want to go right into Dr. Khan?
I think we should, yes.
Yes, we can move forward and they get the same amount of time, 20 minutes.
Okay. Our, our next presenter is Ryan Khan. Dr. Khan is a, his presentation is going to be fugitives, fugitive dust and health. Dr. Khan has 10 years of experience working in public health sector in USA, Bangladesh and India. He is currently working as full-time faculty at James Madison University, and he is also a registered physician in Bangladesh. Dr. Khan, am I saying your name correctly?
Hello, and good morning, yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, you got the floor.
Thank you. So, good morning, everyone. So I know that other presenters before me, they have discussed the information about the fugitive dust. So I would not describe a lot about their characteristics and what is fugitive dust. But before we discuss the health effects of fugitive dust, I'd like to give you a little brief or a little summary about fugitive dust and what can be considered as fugitive dust and from where they're coming from. Because these are important to understand or to have information for us because we need to understand how the effects of fugitive dust are coming in our body. That means we need to understand the sources. So as we know, these are airborne particle, but fugitive dust is not, is not coming from a single source. For example, as we can see here in the PowerPoint, a common source is road dust, but road dust is not also a single source. It's a combination of a lot of dusts coming from other sources. Construction is a common source. My previous speakers, they have talked about mining and soil erosion. So I have some pictures just to let you know, or just to show you some examples of these fugitive dusts. For example, many of you might think, might know and even remember those dust bowl during 1930s in United States that happened in the Great Plains of United States. So this is a picture that you can see here and you can see an example of fugitive dust. Another example I'm showing here is a picture of a gravel road, a gravel road in rural North Dakota. It was taken in 2015. I took the picture and as you can see, a big truck is going over the gravel road and that gravel road is the source of the road dust there. That is another example of fugitive dust. Construction is another common example here. And I know that other presenters, they have talked about how small these particles can be. To understand the health effect, our major concern is the, are the particles which are between particulate material, which are sized between 10 micron or 10 micrometer up to 2.5 micrometer or even less than 2.5, 5 micrometers. Okay, so what are the chemicals in fugitive dust? As you understand that these are coming from various sources. So we need to think that what are the chemical structure of these fugitive dusts? So the common sources that are coming, as you can see, there are elements in those compounds which are regularly found on earth. For example, aluminum, one of the most common element that is found on earth. And that is why there are so many compounds of aluminum, lead, zinc, as you can see, iron, which are abundant in, on earth. Silicon dioxide, a common source or common compound in our regular sand. And but that can be also a component of fugitive dust. What else are there? Some other compounds, platinum group derivatives, platinum and other elements. For example, as you know, there are catalytic converters in modern vehicles, diesel and gasoline vehicles. For example, rhodium is found in the modern vehicles in the catalytic converter. But rhodium and its sister elements, platinum and palladium, they are also commonly found in those fugitive dusts, especially in the urban areas. The aromatic hydrocarbon, for example, burning the gasoline and diesel will produce not only hundred, but thousands of different types of aromatic hydrocarbons. So talking about, and also I have forgot to talk about some minerals there. For example, aeronite and offertite, especially aeronite. These are the commonly occurring minerals in some places in the world. And here is a picture from Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Aeronite, which is a mineral commonly found in some of the states, including North Dakota, from North Dakota up to, to the west to California, has been found to be associated with lung cancer, for example, mesothelioma, and I will discuss that later. So talking about the health effect of these fugitive dusts, we need to consider how are we getting those dusts? As you can see here in this example, in this PowerPoint, the common way, the most common way of getting the dusts in our body is through the inhalation. Because every time, every minute, we are breathing in and breathing out. And if you look at the picture, PowerPoint here, as you can see, the particles, every time we are breathing in, we are breathing in those dusts inside our body. So our respiratory system, that means our lungs, left lung and right lung, both lungs, these are the two most common organs that are going to have the fugitive dust in our body. Some particles, now let's talk about the size of the particles. Some particles in the fugitive dust are so small that they can even bypass. The lung cells can be absorbed into the blood from the lungs and can be transferred throughout the body. If those tiny particles can be dissolved in our blood and can go to the other organ systems of our body, that will include from our, from our brain to our internal organs. So that is why the health effect of this fugitive dusts and those chemicals are new. So that is why the health effect of these fugitive dusts and those chemicals are numerous. So the most common organ, as I said, is the respiratory system of the lungs that are going to see the side effects or the health hazards of fugitive dust. For example, respiratory distress, asthma, as you can see here, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease that includes bronchitis and emphysema. So why? Why are these things are so common? As you can see, many are common side effect or symptom, I would say, of these respiratory illnesses are cough. This is a very common side effect of fugitive dust on our body. But some situations, some diseases, for example, asthma and chronic obstructive pulmonary diseases have other causes, other reasons. So that is why when we discuss the health effect of fugitive dust, for the researchers, the medical practitioners who research, who do research on fugitive dust, this is often difficult to determine the health effect of fugitive dust. So that is why there are some indirect way of measuring the health effect of fugitive dust. One idea is called health index, hazard index, and health effect assessment. But we don't have the time to discuss those issues. But in general, research shows that respiratory tract has the highest health effect of fugitive dust. Let's talk about some cancers. There are various types of cancers that affect our respiratory tract, that means the lungs. One cancer that is called mesothelioma. Mesothelioma has been found to be associated with some minerals that are commonly found in road dust, that means in fugitive dust. As I said, aeronite is a mineral that is even found in United States that can cause mesothelioma. And I would like to remind everyone that mesothelioma can also be caused by another mineral that is called asbestos. Once upon a time, asbestos was widely used in many industrial purpose, even in the insulation in US homes. But nowadays, we don't use that. But asbestos, just like aeronite, can cause mesothelioma. That is a type of lung cancer. So what are other health effects? As you can see, let me go back one slide. The elements here, lead oxide is a common element found on earth, and that has been found to be associated with numerous health effects. There are bloodborne issues, for example, anemia, that is found to be associated with multiple elements and compounds here that are commonly found in fugitive dust. Silicon, calcium, arsenic. Arsenic is a heavy metal that is associated with multiple carcinoma, including lung cancer and skin cancer. Then aluminum, aluminum and its compounds have been found to be associated with anemia and low birth defect. And I also want to let you know that the research that has been done on the health effect are not always done on human. Some of those researchers are done on other animals, for example, rats or mice in the labs. And that is why the research on human health is still, there is a huge field empty there that the researchers need to explore to determine the exact side effects or health hazards. So we still do not know how many compounds or how type of compounds are there in fugitive dust because there are numerous, as I said, and what are the health effects of those unknown compounds are there. But whatever we know so far that shows that fugitive dust in combination and as you can see, that can be, that are coming from urban sources plus rural sources, those are already associated with numerous types of cancers and other health issues. Low birth weight in newborn babies, that has already been found in some research, but that has not been established as an causation. But there has been research that shows the correlation. And I don't want to go in details about correlation and causation, but I want to let you know that correlation indicates there is a relationship between the effect and the result. But that does not indicate there is a direct causation. But there have been other research that shows there are premature death in pregnant women that can be associated with fugitive dust. That was brief information about the health effects of road dust. That was my last slide. And if there is any question or comment, I would be happy to answer. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any council members have any comments or questions for Dr. Khan?
Yeah, this is Richard O'Peake in New Jersey Department of Health. Looking at all of the various components that you mentioned of dust, let's say, at a particular site, or looking at the various health effects that could result from exposure to these dusts, what kind of guidance would you put forth when thinking in terms of best management practices at a particular site? You know, obviously, on various sites, you're not going to have very detailed quantification of what is being emitted from the site. But if you had to put together a recommendation for best management practices, what are some of the highlights that you would have?
Thank you. And I think this is a very important contest topic, how to do that. And I just would like to inform another one information that might be relevant to this answer. In 2015, we did a study on the health effect of road dust that also includes the fugitive dust. And this is 2021, so that's been five years. And I have done another literature review recently before my presentation. And there are very few research that actually talk about that. So there is, because these numerous sites, for example, mining, and I come from North Dakota, in North Dakota, there is an oil boom, for example, shale gas formation, and they use fracking to produce the oil. And as I shared the picture there. But those policymakers, with the researchers, we only can recommend something. But it goes to the policymakers to decide finally, what are the steps that need to be taken care of? And there are opportunities and recommendations by researchers. For example, I can talk about fracking. Fracking itself is a specific topic that can cause a lot of healthcare hazards. Plus, there are associated activities related to fracking. For example, as I shared in the picture, the 18-wheelers running through the urban roads and producing fugitive dust. So when we look at these specific areas of fugitive dust management, we have to look part by part what is causing the dust. For example, I also worked in West Virginia. And in part of West Virginia, there is also this problem of road dust. In some places in West Virginia, they use mineral oil or soybean oil, even soybean oil to reduce the dust. And I have heard other speakers talking about using water to reduce the dust on urban roads. So those areas, those specific jurisdictions, how they deal with dust management, these are highly varied in United States because of different states and those jurisdictions. So we can have a common idea, common recommendation, but eventually, it will depend on the jurisdiction or the administrators. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Dr. Bieleri again. Thank you very much for the talk. I just want to say that we are ahead of schedule again, and I will keep the timing. You have 20 minutes. So I'll give you a three-minute warning and a one-minute warning if you, but we are definitely ahead of schedule. And if there's any questions, we can proceed. But if not, the chair, please.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Khan. The next presenter is Robert Lombach. And the presentation is "The Health Effects of Fugitive Dust with Emphasis on Urban Road Dust." Robert Lombach is an occupational and environmental medicine physician scientist at the Rutgers School of Public Health. He conducts research on the health effects of air pollution with a focus on community-engaged studies of the health effects of traffic-related air pollution. In research funded by NIH, US EPA and CDC, he uses a variety of research approaches, including toxicological, epidemiological, long words here, and clinical research study designs. In addition to research, Dr. Lombach has a clinical practice in occupational environmental science medicine at EOHSI and directs Community Engagement Corps at the NIEHS-funded Center for Environmental Exposure and Disease. Robert, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Pardon me?
Can you see my screen?
I can, I can. You've got the floor.
And you have 20 minutes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Glad to be here. I see, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the health effects of fugitive dust. Maybe add to what Dr. Khan had just discussed, and maybe with a little bit of a different focus, and also try to emphasize some sort of different organizing sort of principles that might be helpful in sort of understanding and applying health effects as the Clean Air Council considers for fugitive dusts. So as we've heard already, certainly, there's a wide range of different types of fugitive dusts. And then there's also a wide range of potential health effects. But there may be some general principles that may be useful that I like to emphasize. And then I want to focus on two different examples that I think have greater prominence here in New Jersey. And one is construction or demolition dust, we've discussed a little bit already, and then also urban road dust. And I know that Mr. Ratzman said in his presentation that the focus is on local. I want to make a point, I guess, during this presentation that road dust, paved road dust, which is 62% according to the inventory of total fugitive emissions in New Jersey, is a local issue. And in fact, that it is emitted mostly, or compared to other sources of fugitive emissions, it's probably more likely to be emitted locally where people live, and that includes urban and suburban areas throughout the state. So we've heard already that fugitive dust is a complex mixture. And I think some visualization sort of at the microscopic level can sort of help to appreciate that. So here I have two examples. One on the left here is actually road dust, not road dust, 9/11 dust from the World Trade Center, deposited dust. And so you can see the variety of sizes and shapes. And this doesn't tell you what the chemical composition is, but we can be assured that these are particles of all different sources with different combinations of chemical composition and other chemical and physical properties. And then on the right here is some road dust from Europe, from Portugal. But similarly, here in the United States, here in New Jersey, under a microscope, there's a variety of sizes and shapes of particles. And I think it's worth emphasizing here too that these are unique in some ways combinations. And we learned that from 9/11 with the World Trade Center dust, that originally, it was categorized or referred to as or thought to be construction dust. Simple construction dust, we have a lot of experience with that. It can be irritating, it can cause other issues. But short-term exposure to construction dust, we don't normally think, even at high levels, is going to cause the kind of health effects that have since resulted among those who responded to the World Trade Center. So just to make that point that they can be unique, and they are unique, and it depends on the toxic properties of material, the amount of exposure, and the susceptibility of people being exposed. So we talked a little bit about the size range of fugitive dusts. And they tend to be in this size range of from 1 to 100 microns. So 100 microns being 1/10th of a millimeter. And that's about the limit of size that we could see in individual particle with the naked eye. So these particles, then, in fugitive dust, through this size range, can then affect the body in a number of ways, as mentioned already. But this diagram might help to visualize or conceptualize that a little bit. So even the larger particles, the ones that may be up to 100 microns, they can deposit on the skin and then potentially also in the upper airway. So it's not that, oh, the particles that are less than 10 microns are the only ones that are important because they can get too deep in the lungs. These larger particles also can get into the upper airway, also deposit on the skin and potentially even cause skin adverse effects. And of course, then the somewhat smaller particles, the thoracic fraction, we call it, that can get into the lungs, into the chest, less than 10 microns. And then respirable in the toxicologic world is less than four microns. But of course, that's very similar to PM 2.5 at 2.5 microns. So we can sort of use those terms interchangeably. So those particles, again, as Dr. Khan described and showed in his slides, how those can get deep into the lung, deep into what we call the periphery lung, the small airways and the alveoli. So size is important, but it's not just size. It's also the chemical composition. We already heard about the metals, the organics like pHs. You know, just a wide variety of metals, other elements, organics. And then one issue that's important, you know, Dr. Khan mentioned how the small particles can actually get into the periphery of the lung, the alveoli, and actually perhaps pass through the alveolar walls into the circulation. But also other particles, even larger particles, that deposit in the nose, the upper airway, some of which we swallow as they get cleared from the airway. They can either be soluble in the airway lining fluid because the lungs and the airways are aligned with the fluid, and those metals, those pHs, those organics can actually dissolve in that and then get absorbed through the body that way. So it's not just that small particles can get through the walls of the respiratory tract, but also that soluble particles can get dissolved. So particles containing lead, say, for example, or other heavy metals, those metals can get into the circulation without being in the particulate form. They get dissolved and then they get absorbed that way. There's also an issue sometimes with isotopic composition. There's radioactive compounds, sort of well-known in granite, so quarries where there might be minerals that contain thorium or uranium, that's a concern potentially, and then mostly for cancer. And then crystalline structure is important. So silica, I'll talk about in a minute, what's called a morphous silica, which doesn't have a crystalline structure. It's pretty benign and it's more like a nuisance sort of dust. But when it has a crystalline structure, like quartz silica, it's a carcinogen. It causes COPD and silicosis, even at relatively low levels over a period of time. And then the shape of the particle is important. So we mentioned earlier aeronite, Dr. Khan mentioned, which is like asbestos, which is a fibrous mineral. So that's important. And then overall, overarching all of this is how the dose is important. So in a dose, we usually think of as concentration times time. So usually, for cancer, for asbestos, for other chronic lung diseases from fugitive dust exposure that might result from fugitive dust exposure, we're talking about high levels of exposure typically over a long period of time. But we don't necessarily know, based on epidemiology, what the effects might be of really high concentrations over short periods of time. And we certainly know that those sorts of exposures can make asthma worse or cause acute symptoms, respiratory distress and so on. But they also may overwhelm defense mechanisms. And so they can be of concern even for short periods of time. Now, just to review a little bit about, you know, we have to get from the source to the body and how that's done. And so just a little bit of additional information about the routes of exposure. So typical routes of exposure for chemicals are inhalation, skin contact, ingestion, and perhaps dermal absorption, which usually isn't such a concern for fugitive dusts. Again, this idea that most of what we might be exposed to or the primary route of exposure from fugitive dust is inhalation. And the idea that the larger particles tend to fall out near the source, may not be available to be inhaled. But if you are near the source, you may be inhaling a lot of larger particles as well. And then the smaller respirable ones can stay suspended for a long period of time and even contribute to like regional PM 2.5 levels. And then when it comes to skin contact, again, And then when it comes to skin contact, again, it's a concern for, again, higher level exposure to higher, larger sized particles, which then could potentially deposit and adhere to the skin. And then ingestion, road dust, you know, becomes yard dust, and it becomes house dust to some extent, where it can then be available to be ingested, especially among children, potentially. I didn't include it on the slide here, but, you know, the water conversation reminded me, a lot of this dust, also the fate and transport of fugitive dust may be also to water, and then through pathways of exposure that way. So when it comes to the, in the general and potential toxic effects of fugitive dust, we can think of it, you know, in a number of different, you know, sort of categories. You know, so the first is, is the sort of sensory irritation, which we might call like a nuisance sort of effect, which is, you know, sort of, we've all experienced it, I'm sure, being in a dusty environment, sometimes feeling a burning sensation in the nose, perhaps coughing. If you have asthma, potentially triggering bronchoconstriction and asthma exacerbation. And this is caused by the fact that we have sensory nerves in our upper airway that respond to, some of them are like touch receptors. So small particles that deposit on the mucosa, the lining of the upper airway and the larynx, are actually sensed as if, they're called mechanoscept receptors, senses that it's being touched by something. So you might even think about, like, I tickle to your throat, feels like it's being, being touched, and, and that's exactly what's happening. Others are chemo receptors, which respond to changes in pH or other irritants in various ways. And then we have another mechanism, which is oxidative stress or inflammation. And so this occurs when the body responds to these particles as, to mount a defense, essentially, and immune cells get recruited, and there's mucus secretion and bronchoconstriction. These are all sort of defense mechanisms, which may or may not be adaptive in certain circumstances, but can certainly then lead, especially in susceptible people, to like asthma, or acute bronchitis, or chronic bronchitis exacerbations. Other potential adverse effects, you'll, you'll hear, if you know, if you, if you talk about, or think about, or read about asbestos, silica, and so on, these chronic effects. So fibrosis, you know, is a chronic effect over typically, again, a period of time of high-level exposure, may or may not be relevant depending on the local circumstances when it comes to, say, like, a local construction dust circumstance. And again, it's really the exposure times the time, you know, typically, that is going to be important. But these are very, very serious diseases. Here's an example of asbestos, and you can, you know, those lung fields should be clear, but they are filled with fibrotic material. Another, more, probably more common, certainly, certainly more common potential health effect of fugitive dust is the fact that the larger size fraction can also contain pollen and mold spores. You know, typically, these are not included, like, in the PM 2.5 fraction, they're larger, and so they deposit in the upper airway, then, in the nose, throat, and so forth, and they can cause allergic rhinitis, which I'm sure, you know, Dr. Bialeray is very familiar with, can tell you, tell you more about, as well as lower, lower airway allergic responses. One is called hypersensitivity pneumonitis, which is, again, pretty uncommon, and it's, like, an example is farmer's lung. And again, it's usually caused by really high-level exposure to organic material, agricultural material. And then something very rare, and not really a concern so much in New Jersey, is pathogens that may be harbored in soil. So an example, as out west, in the western states, a disease called valley fever, coxidio mycosis, which is a fungus that grows in soil, and those spores that inhale can cause this type of a disease. But we are, you know, sometimes concerned that particulate matter exposure, or other air pollution exposure, can, in combination with infectious disease agents like COVID-19, can actually make the infectious disease worse. So that's another potential mechanism by which, you know, fugitive dust may be harmful. So cancer was mentioned earlier. Again, there are carcinogens potentially in fugitive dust, those radioactive materials potentially, or fibrous minerals like asbestos, or fractured, you know, mentioned, I think, earlier, sand, to some extent, sand contains quartz. It's generally the type of silica what we call finely fractured, or, excuse me, freshly fractured, that's more of a concern, and we'll look at that in a minute for silica. And again, there's systemic toxicity then potentially, as our bodies may absorb these various elements, including heavy metals and other toxic elements that could be absorbed. And then there's issues beyond the lung, which can be caused in a number of different ways, such as the inflammation in the lung, sort of spilling over into the rest of the body, and causing more systemic inflammation. And that's been linked to the increased risk of heart attacks and stroke, and other cardiovascular disease from particulate matter in general, and then also the adverse reproductive effects that Dr. Khan touched on, and now the other effects, and newer and emerging effects of neurodevelopmental degeneration, and neurodevelopmental and degenerative nervous system diseases. So we're learning that, you know, inhaled agents, and I'm sure the, you know, the council's aware of this from other, you know, discussions over time, that air pollution, including fugitive emissions, fugitive dust, cause more than respiratory tract diseases and disorders. And of course, we always have to remember that it's really the dose that makes the poison, and that the dose-response relationships are important in evaluating risk of any of these health outcomes. Let's touch really briefly, because again, it may come up as you deliberate about fugitive dust, that this term pneumoconiosis, which is a Latin term for essentially dusty lungs, and it includes a number of different disorders, asbestos, silicosis, black lung disease, stenosis from tinsiderosis, and a number of others. And it's a benign condition, it's not malignant, it's not a cancer condition, but it can be very debilitating and actually kill people, as I'm sure you're familiar with, like asbestos can. And it's caused by fibrosis, but again, it's typically caused by high-level exposure over a long period of time. So I wanted to mention a little bit more about silica, which again, is in sand, it's in concrete, it's in other construction materials, mineral materials. And it's, the concern is really for this crystalline silica, which is also a typical form of that is quartz, as opposed to amorphous silica, which an example is glass, others are like diatomaceous earth and some others, which, those, that the amorphous silica are really pretty non-toxic, they're, again, more nuisance dust, they can cause the irritation and so on, but they don't have specific toxicities, whereas crystalline silica, you know, can cause lung cancer, silicosis, very serious diseases. And it was mentioned earlier, you know, I think in terms of large-scale sort of construction, other activities that emits fugitive dust, how important, you know, sort of, certain controls are, including, you know, using wetting, and that's really important, not only to protect the public or neighbors of a construction site, but also the workers themselves. So there's a lot of OSHA guidance, and I think it's really important in this respect, too, to consider that enforcement of regulations to protect workers should also be protecting people, you know, in the general environment as well. And here's an example of using wet methods to reduce the amount of crystalline silica being produced by cutting concrete.
Three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so last three minutes. I want to talk about non-exhaust emissions from road traffic for a few minutes. These, like other PM, other emissions, again, which, if they're less than 100 microns, we really don't see them as digital particles, but in aggregate, we can see them. We don't often see that, like, we saw, we see, like, from piles of, you know, material, but what we, when it comes to road dust, because it is somewhat dispersed, again, but it's dispersed in areas where people live. And what I've commonly seen it as, is when you get, like, black snow, pretty shortly after a snow, freshly fallen snow in urban areas, in New Jersey especially. And it's due to the wearing down of brakes, clutches, tires, and the road surface itself, as well as re-suspended dust particles from the road, which include a lot of this blackness, not only the asphalt from the road, but also the black carbon from diesel emissions and other material that gets deposited on the road, and that gets re-suspended. So again, the highest levels of these emissions occur in the most densely populated areas. We have more roadways and more people in proximity to roadways, that contain those metals and organics that we talked about that are hazardous, potentially hazardous. And it's a significant, but really unquantified burden on health. There's a great new report, the OECD 2020 Report on Non-Exhaust Particulate Emissions from Road Transport, just from December of 2020. This figure shows PM 10 on the left here, PM 2.5 on the right. It shows that, essentially, the message here is that for both PM 10 and PM 2.5 currently, traffic emissions of PM are predominantly from the non-exhaust. We focus on the exhaust, we focus on the tailpipe, but in terms of mass, here in these, both of these figures, and you can follow these figures later, but already, the, the total mass, or the proportion of mass, which is the solid line in these figures, which is from non-exhaust emissions, is greater than, than the exhaust emissions. And it's going to become more so as zero emission and low emission vehicles replace current vehicle fleet.
One minute.
So that activity to, you know, transition to zero emission vehicles is not going to affect, or, and effect is going to be, the dotted line at the top of these, both of these figures, is showing the trend going forward of increasing, due to increasing vehicle miles traveled, and increasing weight of vehicles, perhaps with larger batteries and so forth. So my final slide here is that, you know, fugitive dust has very serious potential health outcomes, but it does depend on the magnitude, frequency, and duration of exposure. Road dust, I think, is a particular concern. I think that the Clean Air Council should really consider that. There are some things that might be done locally. One of them, for example, is the state of New York and California have restricted the amount of copper and antimony in metal brake pads, for example. There are other things that can be done, reducing speed, lightweighting vehicles. Some things have to be done probably at the, you know, larger scale, federal level, but this should definitely be considered by the Clean Air Council, this non-exhaust road traffic emissions issue, which is not going to go away with the zero emission, tailpipe emissions trends that are happening now. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Great information. Do we have any comments or questions from the council members?
Dr. Leonard Bialeray calling. Thanks, Bob. It's, I wish you were back on the council, quite honestly. Your presence on the council in the past has always been invigorating and actually educational. And again, a couple, two questions. Do you know any data of, you know, your, your very big focus is on roadside, or the, you know, the emissions there, barrier techniques, or some techniques to decrease communities that are in, you know, urban areas, where roads, where, you know, we're a state of New Jersey, we have more blacktop than any other state, compared by, you know, by square footage and population. So what, what could you provide to the Clean Air Council, a concept, you know, what is it? Because then the second question is that transition in the time for electric cars, are electric cars going to be as much of a problem in general?
Yeah, so that's a great question. You know, and there certainly has been research done on, like, barrier sort of methods, including, like vegetation barriers and others near roadways. And I think an important point is that much of what's been done so far has looked at PM near roadways, and that has not been able to distinguish between PM, that's the non-exhaust, and PM, that's the exhaust emissions. So that, that, that data does show that there can be some benefits from buffers, you know, barriers, vegetation barriers, and so on. It's somewhat limited, depends on circumstances, you know, very local circumstances, but it can help. But I think, you know, important point is that, based on, again, emission inventories, primarily, we know that the non-exhaust road dust is important, but we don't know from the epidemiology, like, all the epidemiology that's looked at how asthma's worse near roadways, some of the work that you've done, for example, how, how heart disease is worse near roadways, can't distinguish between where that exposure came from, or what component of it, of this complex mixture is most important, or, and so on. But yeah, so the same kind of approaches that would reduce the exposure to emissions from exhaust emissions would also be relevant to reducing the non-exhaust roadway emissions.
Any data on electric cars?
Right, so, you know, so with electric cars, again, when it comes to non-exhaust, obviously, they don't have any exhaust, right, zero emissions? But, but they may actually have more non-exhaust, because they may be heavier, especially with, you know, increasing range, larger batteries, and the, the weight of the vehicle is important for the non-exhaust emissions, more roadware primarily. They do have regenerative brakes, which means that they don't have as much emissions from brake deterioration, right, because they have, they still have the regular brakes, but they don't, not use nearly as much. So, yeah, I think it's a fascinating area, and that OECD report, again, very current, December 2020, it's easy, it's pretty easy to read, pretty straightforward, that gives, like, you know, a good overview of this, what I think has been an overlooked issue around non-exhaust roadway traffic, emissions and exposure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your input.
Yeah, hi. Dr. Lombach, John Valeri. You mentioned OSHA regulations, which kind of perked my ears, because part of this analysis is not just whether there's a health impact and a problem, but what's the solution? And one of the reasons why we've had discussions with both the air program and the water program is how maybe there are already regulatory mechanisms to control this. Had not been thinking a lot about OSHA. Not sure if you, I know you're a doctor, not a regulatory person, but the question, I guess, I would ask you is, based on your knowledge of OSHA, or at least how practices are, for workers are being, or best practices for workers, are there similar, it looked like you had at least one similar control of dust for workers, are there others that you're aware of? And again, you may not be in a position to answer it, because it's not your area of regulation, but I am curious about your thoughts.
Yeah, so I think for silica in particular.
I just want to remind you, two minutes, two and a half minutes left.
Thanks. There's very specific regulations for silica, and a lot of guidance, like from OSHA and other worker health and safety organizations around reducing exposure to silica among construction workers. Like, one of the issues is that there's very little enforcement, whether, you know, this regulation or others. You know, certainly, there are other regulations around asbestos. So as mentioned earlier, demolition of buildings and asbestos, there should be controls for worker exposures who are doing that. There can be asbestos in roofing tiles, that's another area where there might be a regulation that's appropriate. But general sort of nuisance dust, you know, OSHA regulates that at a very high level of exposure. Silica, on the other hand, again, is regulated at very, very low levels of exposure, meaning that, like, for regular, general nuisance dust, there's often not an applicable regulation. And if there is, it's a nuisance dust regulation, which is, essentially, workers can be exposed to what we think to be clouds of dust, like 5mg per cubic meter, you know, dust, which is, you know, 5,000 micrograms per cubic meter, you know, compared to the PM 2.5 standard for ambient, which is 35mg per cubic meter. We're talking about a lot of, so not a lot of enforcement or regulation around what could be called nuisance dusts.
Okay. I want to keep us on track, so I'll.
Keeping right on track. Back to the chair.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Our next speakers, presenters are Michael and Bertani Morgan. The title of their presentation is "Fugitive Dust in Waterfront South Camden." Mike and Bertani recently rehabbed the house and live in waterfront South Camden with their toddler son. Air quality in their neighborhood has always been important to them, and became an even more pressing issue after becoming parents. Mike works at Rutgers School of Nursing Camden and conducted a study on the impacts of black carbon and heavy truck traffic in their neighborhood. Bertani works as the, works at the Center for Environmental Transformation, supporting neighborhood youth. in the process of urban farming and increasing access to healthy foods. Mike and Bertani, are you there?
Looks like they are there. Are you mute, guys muted? Okay, it sounds, I hear sound. This is Dr. Valeri. Are you there?
Mike?
Hello, can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear you now? And the clock is ticking. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
We're also here with our two-year-old son, you know, COVID and babysitting. He might hop in and present a little bit.
So thank you for having us and thank you for letting us talk about this neighborhood. Brittany will kind of give an overview of the personal experience, her own story, some videos and stories from neighbors as well. And then I will kind of wrap with some images of the neighborhood and some recommendations as well.
Yeah, so it's funny that we both live in this neighborhood and we both professionally do something about environmental justice for our jobs. So I work for the Center for Environmental Transformation. I'm the youth wellness coordinator there. We hire teenagers from the city, from work in our urban town. We do education. Exactly the same neighborhood. And something that has been coming up more and more has been this concept of environmental racism and how much more polluting industries are put into particular neighborhoods like our lower-income predominant minority.
Excuse me, if I can interrupt, Brittany, we're having trouble hearing you. Mike, you're coming through pretty well, but Brittany, you're a little.
Okay. Can you hear me a little bit better?
That sounds better, Brittany. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I work at Center for Environmental Transformation with teenagers. We do a lot of educational workshops about different issues in our neighborhood. Like redlining and lots of different stuff. And something that's been coming up more and more is environmental justice issues, pollution in our neighborhood, the different industries that are here. And there are remarkable amount of them in a very small area. And that's something that is actually across the United States, neighborhoods like ours tend to bear the brunt of polluting industries for their states. So my background is also in clinical counseling. I have a concentration in trauma. So when I think about things, I'm just generally trained to think about them through the lens of of trauma. And when we were in school, of course, we talked about how poverty is a form of trauma and racism is a form of trauma. And these things that we might not normally think of are actually traumatic for individuals. And it wasn't until I've experienced it myself and started looking more into it that came to recognize more that pollution is actually a form of trauma too. When we're talking about these environmental justice communities like ours, we have to consider the complex trauma of all of what goes into living there for folks, including pollution. So in terms of fugitive dust in our neighborhood, that is something that we started experiencing. I mean, I'm certain it was there, but how we came to discover it was an interesting story that involved our good friend and actual husband at the time, Jordan, who was bike commuting from, from our neighborhood to Philadelphia in the early, the morning he worked at a bakery, he had a really strong bike light. And he noticed as he was cycling past these industries, he would suddenly come across these dense clouds of, we called it particulate matter. We didn't know about the term fugitive dust. These clouds of dust, basically. And he would ride through it and then it would be gone. He would notice it with clear skies. He would notice it even after it rained, so it didn't necessarily even seem like road dust, but it could have been, but it suddenly became this mystery of what is this particulate matter in the air that we're experiencing? And he started taking videos of it at different times of the day. And we have a few videos show you what we're talking about. But the best way that I can describe it and what we've described it to DEP individuals is like, imagine you take a super old dusty rug and you shake it really vigorously and all of what would be put in the air, that's what it is like at its worst. And sometimes it's concentrated further down towards the industry and sometimes it is right up next to our houses. And again, it's not necessarily something that you see very easily with your naked eye unless you're shining a really bright light and then you can see it pretty clearly. So Mike's going to help me play some videos really fast.
So the so the description from, from the neighbor was, is on the screen there. And I will play the video. So this is a couple of videos that were taken between April and December of 2019. I'm not sure if you'll be able to hear the audio or not, but basically he's just kind of showing that it's a residential street.
We do not hear the audio.
Okay. I'm just having that it's a residential area. So he's just kind of saying, oh. You know, the naked eye, yes. But you right button and you watch more clearly. Oh, sorry.
You are breaking up. Can you speak closer to the mic?
And the air is clear and there's not this stuff in the light. We'll play the other video where you can just see it pretty clearly.
And then the second video shows much denser kind of concentration of the particulate matter. And I believe this one was further down Second Street, closer to some of the industrial sites. But I mean, you can kind of see the intensity of how concentrated it is in the bike light there. So basically, you know, he was describing cycling through this while going to work in the mornings. And here's one more video. So you can kind of see it floating and, you know, he's basically pointing out that it's clear skies, you know, so it's not, you know, it's not any type of condensation or, or precipitation of any kind.
So we he started taking videos in 2019. It's 2021. We're still experiencing this fugitive dust. We started organizing a little bit in our neighborhood around it, getting some friends of ours that lived here to report to the Warren DEP whenever we would experience particulate matter, which was often at night. When, you know, not, nobody would necessarily be available to come out right away. And I know that they were looking into it. So it's something that we kept reporting, we kept bringing attention to, but we kept hitting a wall where it seemed like nobody knew what to do about it. Nobody knew how to track where it came from. We have a pretty strong idea of who we think is generating a lot of this fugitive dust. And we just noticed patterns of what industry was working when it would be happening. Yeah. So difficult to get anything done. And then COVID hit and my friend stopped bike commuting because he lost his job. Apologies, my son. He stopped bike commuting and there is so much other stuff going on that we basically stopped reporting. And something that I want to say about all of this is just the difficulty of relying so heavily on residents reporting. Fugitive dust. I know, and this, and this is where the piece of trauma came in. Just for myself, I, I started realizing how stressful it was for me. I would walk my dog every night and I would shine my phone flashlight and I would look for the fugitive dust in the air and then I would call Warren DEP. And the time that it took to do that and talking to them on the phone the next day while I was at work and just the emotional impact that that had on me, knowing that I was raising my son, he was breathing this in the air was really difficult. And then especially with the compounded stress of of COVID and everything else. And then recently in January, one of the industries in our neighborhood had a really big fire and it displaced our family for several days. We had to go to a hotel. It was the most pungent, horrible, toxic smelling stuff. I know toxic is not a word that you can use. It's a technical word. But it, you would go outside and you would be coughing and choking and it wasn't a mandatory evacuation, but a lot of folks had to leave their houses because they just were feeling so sick breathing this in. And after that, there's been a renewed sense of urgency for individuals in our neighborhood to do environmental justice work against these polluting industries and against things like fugitive dust. But it continues to be difficult to decide whether or not I'm going because of this experience that I've had, and especially after my family has been displaced and especially after myself experiencing increasingly worse asthma symptoms since moving to this neighborhood. It is often difficult to choose to to do the reporting and to go through that whole thing. So Mike's going to get more into recommendations, but something briefly that I have to say is that for these environmental justice communities like ours, what, what could it look like for DEP on people to be proactive about empowering other residents to know how to use these tools? To do the, the warning and what could it look like to not solely rely on folks in the neighborhoods to do the reporting? Because like myself, I think a lot of people are experiencing a lot of different traumas, but especially trauma and pollution is the one that I'm talking about. And it might be hard for them to, to report. So I think it is vastly, vastly under-reported fugitive dust and other issues that our neighborhood faces.
All right.
Thank you, Brittany. Oh, no, I was gonna continue with a few other points. So this is just the map of the neighborhood. So the two red stars are kind of the main areas where the videos appear that I showed you. And this is taken from the What's in My Community site. So you can see, you know, there's various other industrial sites surrounding the neighborhood. This is a satellite view. So you can kind of see, you know, the majority of the waterfront on the left is industrial sites. And to the east is, you know, where the core neighborhoods typically are. So this is a satellite photo of the roof of some buildings at one of the metal shredding sites in, in that area. So this is just kind of an example of, of a potential fugitive dust source that, you know, has no regulation of any kind. You know, so for sure, the facility itself would, you know, but as you can see, just kind of like looking at the roof lines of all these buildings, how, how cloudy with dust they are. And, you know, once that catches a heavy breeze, you know, that would for sure go towards the neighborhood. So just kind of an example of something that's not regulated, but could still cause off-site problems. And then these, this is a photo of a site near Chestnut 7th in Camden. So in the top left, you can see what the site looked like a couple of years ago. This is just kind of an example of how quickly the neighborhood can change. You know, it was a vacant lot with vegetation. And within the last year or two, I'm not even sure what this facility operates or handles. You know, but it's kind of turned into this very large, growing mound that you can see on the bottom right with some, some vehicles and equipment handling the material. The satellite image doesn't quite do it justice from, from, from the top, from, from the street, you can see from the street, you can see that these piles are very large. They're upwards of two or three stories high. And to the right and left, you can see it's a residential neighborhood. And this is another example of a site that quickly changed. And this is in waterfront south. So in the top left, a couple of years ago, it was, you know, just a vacant site. And then it was leased out to a trucking company, which now stores tractors there. And, you know, just the, the dust from the site being kicked up by the vehicles has caused a, an issue for the neighbors nearby. So the recommendations are kind of focused on both the regulatory side and the monitoring side. So for example, with the regulatory limitations, my knowledge, the existing regulations tend to focus on an activity such as a particular piece of equipment, moving material from one place to another, rather than the presence of a material. So, you know, if there's a pile of dirt or scrap, for example, and a and a piece of equipment doesn't touch it, then it's quite possible that that's not a, a regulated source that, you know, would potentially cause fugitive dust emissions. So it's, it feels like there's a lot of loopholes in the regulations that could be addressed. In addition, I'm fairly certain that a lot of the regulations are focused on stationary rather than mobile equipment, which is kind of another loophole of, you know, from the, the user endpoint as a resident, you know, it doesn't matter to us what type of equipment is moving material. What matters to us is, you know, whether or not this dust is coming towards our home or not. And from the monitoring standpoint, you know, we were established, sorry, we were given the name of Environmental Justice Community, I believe around '05 or '06 and currently there's the monitoring station on Spruce Street and up until 2010, there's also a monitoring station at CCMUA. And that station was discontinued around 2010. So even after becoming recognized as a community with a lot of, with a lot of pollution, the monitoring, the neighborhood was reduced rather than increased. And so from a resident point of view, you know, we would kind of hope to see that we would have perhaps more data gathering rather than less. And the third recommendation is just to continue supporting local initiatives. So one idea is that when a neighborhood industry is fined by DEP for violations, perhaps that money could be allocated towards supplemental environmental projects in coordination with neighborhood entities. That way the money could stay in the neighborhood and go directly towards funding projects that would, you know, improve the environmental outcomes in the neighborhood as opposed to the money going towards DEP. So trying to keep it local. And also to continue supporting local citizen science. So the, the several DEP members helped me out with conducting a study last year on black carbon in our neighborhood from passing trucks going to the industrial site despite Ferry Avenue being a street that is off limits to, to vehicles. So that's a great initiative that already exists and continuing to support that would be very helpful. I'm sorry, what was that?
We have three minutes left.
Okay. So the final point, just to kind of, in terms of both regulatory and monitoring, just to give an example of the difficulty of, of identifying and providing a solution to fugitive dust. So with those videos that we showed, for example, you know, many of us have reported it over the last two or so years. You know, so the process is we report it, DEP comes out to investigate. They have to, you know, be able to, you know, see it in the same way that we saw it. They have to be able to verify that it impacts our life and wellbeing. They would have to also be able to identify the source, which is extremely difficult for fugitive dust. And even if they do get to that point, they would have to verify if the fugitive dust is in any way violating existing permits. So all of that is kind of a complicated process that doesn't usually come to fruition all the way to the end. And even from the monitoring side, what the DEP does well is, you know, the monitoring stations that exist, they have, you know, those samples analyzed. And, you know, they can, they can tell us all sorts of different data points from existing stationary stations. But for fugitive dust like this, to my knowledge, the DEP doesn't have the capacity to, you know, go out and do samples for, you know, small instances like this. And, you know, so as a resident, it's kind of leaves you at the point of like where, where are the protections, you know? If, if we can't identify whether it violates regulation and if we can't even identify what the material is or where it's coming from, you know, it kind of leaves us with a feeling like there's few, few protections to, you know, to actually address the issue head on. And I say, and I say all of that, knowing that all of our DEP colleagues are, you know, doing the best they can. And uh, and I say, and I say all of that, knowing that all of our DEP colleagues are, you know, doing the best they can. Um, with uh, with the resources they have. Um, so I, I also definitely want to say thank you very much to all of our DEP colleagues, uh, because I, I work with many of them. Um.
Right on time.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mike and Bertani. Uh, real quick, uh, any council members have any comments? There being none?
Well, I, I guess, Dr. Beller, I do have one question and I.
Sure.
It's important to get a sense. Is there an alarm system, meaning uh, when you, when you find something and you report to the DEP? Uh, is there an uh, an interface that you have seen worked or not worked? I mean, that's an important, I'm just trying to face as an independent, you, you noticed something. Uh, in one of our past public hearings, we looked at environmental monitors that were for the public. And we, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire, but there's could be a lot of smoke and no, and burning embers and not truly clinically related. So how, you said you, you gave a positive statement for the um, DEP, but you know, is there a response time that, that it was satisfactory or not?
Uh, good question. I'm not, um, I don't specifically remember what response times were like for investigators that came out. Uh, sometimes they definitely have come out the same night. Sometimes it might be the next day.
That's.
Yeah. So I think, I think the issue was not a lack of um, you know, effort on the GP's part. I think it's more of um, there are certain limitations. That they have to work with and that could be addressed. Yeah.
Okay, thank.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Mike and Bertani. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, we uh, will move on to our next presenter, uh, Joanne Held. And she is going to speak on routine fugitive dust controls are essential to protect overburdened communities. Joanne is a self-employed, is self-employed, is an air toxics analyst after 26 years of service. With the air quality program in the New Jersey DEP. She has a BS in meteorology from state, St. Louis University and an MS in air pollution control from Harvard School of Public Health. Since retiring from NJDEP in 2005, she has been active in environmental justice projects in Camden and serves as the DEP. Environmental Justice Advisory Council. Joanne also serves as a member of the New Jersey Site Remediation Professionals Licensing Board. Is a member of the Pennington Borough Environmental Commission and actively, is actively involved in local sustainability efforts. And Joanne, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
You've got the floor.
You have 20 minutes.
Yes, thank you. Um, first, I'd like to thank all the previous panelists for answering wholeheartedly. The question is dust, fugitive dust, just a nuisance or something else, something more? With an emphatic yes, it's something more. It's not just a nuisance. What I'd like to do today is in my time is sort of, I look at um, three different things. One is describe for you a little bit more what it's like to live in an environmental justice overburdened community. From the perspective of fugitive dust, describe some work that has been done in Camden to try and address fugitive dust. And then to give some suggestions for how the DEP might go about addressing this, what might seem like an overwhelming um, issue. So first of all, um, you know, fugitive dust, as Ken mentioned, it, half of it is really large particles, which may settle out quickly. But the other half is not. And so if you live in one of the overburdened communities and you look at the maps that Mike just showed. You'll see that homes are right next door industrial areas. And this is common throughout New Jersey with all of our old industrial infrastructure. You'll find tiny little properties with some kind of industrial activity on it and a home right next to it or across the street. So the fugitive dust is going to be impacting people who live in overburdened communities. It's not a matter of, oh, it'll settle out or, or it'll be dispersed. It's going to reach those people. And I think that's really important for us to keep in mind. The second thing that I want to talk about is how we went about trying to assess fugitive dust as well as other pollutants. In Camden Waterfront South. Um, if you, as you've heard, the waterfront south is uh, one square mile neighborhood in the southwest corner of Camden. From 2002 to 2005, the DEP um, worked on the Camden Waterfront South Air Toxics Pilot Project. Which uh, is evaluated all of the air, as much as we could, all of the air pollution sources within that little square mile. And I want to acknowledge that a couple of people who are listening in today were part of the DEP team that worked on this. And also some of them were part of the neighborhood team that helped us to do a good job, I think. Um, yeah, let's see. So one of the, the pilot project was completed in 2005. It began with a comprehensive inventory of air pollution sources in and near the waterfront south neighborhood. It, the inventory included every facility with an air permit and many operations that did not have a permit. It also identified many fugitive dust generating sources at the permitted facilities that were not included as sources in the permit. After extensive modeling was completed, particulate matter from seven facilities in this one square mile community. Were found to have significant impacts. All of these facilities generated fugitive dust. We formed some teams to evaluate each of these scenarios, each of the facilities. And came up with a combination of actions, enforcement actions, intense scrutiny of conditions during a pot, permit modification review. Pollution prevention plan reviews and other actions that could be used to make improvements at these facilities. And some improvements were made. For example, we discovered that at one facility, they were doing sandblasting outside. This activity should have had an air pollution permit and should have been inside and that was addressed and the um, activity was moved indoors. So that's great. Um, but this is an ex, really extensive effort to identify these facilities in one environmental justice neighborhood. And we know now that there are hundreds of them throughout the state. Um, it, it was a significant investment of time and effort on the part of the DEP permit enforcement staffs. Our partners in the Camden County Health Department and lots of uh, citizen input as well. I think New Jersey needs to have routine procedures in place so that if they're to really address the vast number of sites. In the state that have fugitive dust emissions, and I'll try and suggest something, some ideas in a few minutes. But before I go to that, I wanted to talk about a follow-up project. This happened in the, about four years later. Um, during the work in waterfront south, we identified these facilities that were air sources. We identified truck traffic as being a significant source category that we weren't able to um, quantify. We also identified scrap handling operations. I'm not going to dignify them by calling them. Waste management facilities. They're just scrap handling. Um, they're identified part of the project and. The neighbors continue to raise this issue. Um. We couldn't model them because we don't know how to characterize their emissions, but we know that there is fugitive dust coming from these facilities. And, and these emissions would be at ground level, so there's no room for dilution from dispersion. Um, and they're often again adjacent to residential properties. They often show up in those empty lots between homes. Um, so the concern about these operations lingered in 2009 as part of a follow-up project with the US EPA Care Grant. An informal survey of scrap yards in, in near waterfront south were carried out. I say near because we looked at the periphery because, just because the um, emissions coming from across the street and it's in the next neighborhood. Doesn't mean it doesn't affect you where you live. This survey identified over 30 locations where scrap was being stored in plain sight on the property. Only half of the sites were operations with air permits. The type of material they, we identified as uh, at the non-permitted sites especially included pallets, tires, piping. Concrete rocks, eye beams, trailers, cars, telephone poles and lots of trash and debris. All of these sites and scrap yards have the potential to generate fugitive dust. And there's, they've sort of fall outside of the arena of control. So it's just another level of fugitives that added to the other levels of fugitive dust that are present in these kinds of neighborhoods. More recently, through the efforts of the Camden Collaborative Initiative, there's been cooperation with city and county police departments. To address some of the illegal dumping in the area. And I think that this is another um, you know, another level of uh, activity that's really important. But I guess. What I'd like to sort of focus on now is that. There, there, first, there's cumulative effects. So you have a cumulative sources. You've got the permitted sources, which may have fugitive dust at them that aren't included in the permits. You've got the non-permitted sources that maybe shouldn't be operating at all, but they are. Or maybe could be operating better because they're maybe not subject to air permits, but they're subject to maybe a water permit. Um, you've got all the dust from uh, the track, traffic going through. And all of these things combined are what those residents of waterfront south are being exposed to. They're inhaling it. And if it's in, in the case of the large particles, it's being deposited on their front porch. Their toddlers are playing in that dust. There's a lot of levels. Uh, it's fugitive dust isn't a simple thing. It's much more complex. So how in the world do you go about addressing it if you're the DEP with limited resources, of course? Um, I'd like to suggest that perhaps something that's like a SIP process would be useful. And I know everybody, all the DEP people are just ducked under their desks when they heard the word SIP, State Implementation Plan. It can be an arduous process and it's got lots of bureaucratic stuff associated with it. But it also has a really great structure. It starts by developing an emissions inventory. Now, Ken showed earlier an emissions inventory from 2017 for area sources. It didn't include a lot of the sources that we've been talking about. So you would have to start by doing a better emissions inventory. You can get, the EPA has developed emission factors, which you can use to try and characterize some of these non-permitted activities. And get a better emissions inventory. You'll find when you do that, that you have lots of different categories. Um, some of them we haven't even heard about yet, like the agricultural stuff, um, lots of categories of sources. And then you go about looking at them and saying, what's a simple, hopefully, and effective way to address these. Source categories and reduce the effect that they have on these people who live nearby. And I think you'll find that there may, and the, the last thing that you might have to do is change some of the air pollution rules. But that's a long, arduous process. And I would encourage the DEP to first look at some of the short-term quick fixes. Um, if there are ways to improve what Mike was just talking about, the um, the uh. Inspections, the compliance assistance that happens along with a, a report from a citizen. Maybe it's not just going out saying, whoop, no particulate today, but going back and talking to them in a compliance assistance manner. About ways that they can reduce what they're emitting. Um, I think there's some other, and so you could, you could do that. Um. There, you could also, there's um, recently the DEP issued a compliance advisory for scrap metal handling and recycling businesses. Reminding them in this advisory, which was issued just this past February, that their businesses are responsible for applying for a permit. Um, if they handle more than 50 pounds per hour of material, which obviously they do. That kind of advisory will bring a lot of uh, facilities back into the air permitting arena, and that's important. Um, I think collaborating with other state, other DEP agencies is another really important way to address fugitive dust. You heard earlier about the stormwater runoff, her stormwater permits. Uh, that's a place where collaborating and saying, well, if you're going to, you know, sometimes a shed, a three-sided shed over a pile. Is going to help reduce fugitive dust. And at the same time, it will mean that any runoff can be collected more easily than if it's just all over the property. So there's places, I think, that you'll find that there's really good um, nexus between what will be good for stormwater runoff. And what was, be good for reducing fugitive dust. I think that there may be other water quality programs, perhaps those that protect um, water bodies from um. Uh, that, that also might be uh, uh, good pro, places for collaboration. Um, we haven't heard from the solid waste program yet today, but I suspect that the solid waste program, especially with their emphasis on recycling activities. And what's legal and what's illegal will be a really good place for the DEP to coordinate. And start to get a handle on those facilities that are out there doing stuff that shouldn't, they shouldn't be doing. Or if they have a permit to make sure they do things right with more um. More, with better management practices. I'd like to just mention that um, up till now, my experience has been most of the um. Uh, fugitive dust has been addressed on sort of a case-by-case basis with dust management plans. And I read one recently that was pretty lame. Um, it really just said, you know, try hard. And check once a week to see if you're trying hard. And it really didn't have much in the way of substantial. Um, we're putting this shed in, we are changing what, you know, it's like um, where we drop the stuff. We're moving this stuff maybe closer to the, uh, what farther away from the residents, doing those sort of things. Real, physical, in place and always working kind of things will be, I think, important management practices. Um, I think also that collaborating with local and county agencies would be um, also expedient. Um, that there, they know, they are right there on the ground and they know where there are issues. If the DEP could develop a compendium of best management practices that they could share with local and county agencies. That would give them the wherewithal to really get out there and address these facilities right away. They can just go in and say, this is the problem. Here's the best management practice. This is what we expect you to do here in our community. Um, so I think that a sort of a SIP approach where you lay all these things out and show, this is the source category. This is how we're going to address it would be a really good way for um, the DEP to begin to address fugitive dust. And I think the sooner the better. Sometimes these things just take so long. So if some really expeditious things can be um, identified upfront. Uh, especially working with communities, we found lots of ways that the communities could identify for us. Uh, quick and easy solutions. That's what, that's where DEP should be going. And I thank you for this chance to talk about Camden and fugitive dust. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on time.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Uh, any comments from the uh, council?
Yeah, Bob, it's Toby Hen. I have a question for Joanne. Hi, Joanne. Nice to see you. Thanks for that. Um, the, the videos, the commentary, the pictures and, and stories that we've heard about Camden have really been compelling. Even, even before the hearing today, we, we saw some of that material and uh, certainly shows that, that there's still some work to do in that community. Are you aware of, of, of other hotspots, other communities around New Jersey that have, have similar concerns that we should also be, be paying attention to?
Um, yeah, Camden's been the poster child today, but certainly there are several neighborhoods in Newark. And actually, uh, that are also having a similar mix of fugitive dust sources. I believe if you go into Patterson, you'll find the same kind of mix. And if you were to look at the new map of overburdened communities that was produced as a result of the law that was passed. You'll find in that a number of, uh, it's sort of old industrial areas. That um, have exactly the same characteristics is what we're talking about in Camden.
Okay, it's really helpful to have your, have, have you point us to where we need to focus. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Toby. Anybody else have any comments or questions for this presenter? Okay, there being none. Thank you, Joanne. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. And um, I believe it's lunch break coming up at 11:30. Is that correct?
You are correct. It's a lunch break for 30 minutes. Uh, we have it from 11:30 to 12:00 and we start at 12:00 promptly.
Okay, so everyone take a break and I'll see you at 12 o'clock. Thank you.
We'll be keeping this video on or so people don't have to log off, correct?
We'll be keeping this video on, or so people don't have to log off, correct?
People should not log off. I'm staying on.
We will be stopping.
Right, people should not log off.
Right, don't log off, but we will be stopping the video for the next half hour, and then we will restart the video this afternoon.
That's correct. Okay, thank you very much, all. See you at 12:00.